Good morning. Welcome Lambton County Council members, members of the public and media that are joining us in person and online. I'd ask Mr. Beauchamp to take the roll call, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. Deputy Warden Agar. Councillor Atkinson. Councillor Bouchi. Councillor Bradley.
Present.
Councillor Broad.
Present.
Councillor Case. Councillor Cook. Councillor Dennis. Councillor Ferguson. Councillor Hand. Councillor Lucely. Councillor McRoberts. Councillor Miller. Councillor Sageman. Councillor Veen. Councillor White. We have Quorum.
Thank you. We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Ochipewa, Odawo, and Potawatomi peoples referred to collectively as Inishina Bag. It is through the connection of the Inishina Bag with the spirit of the land, water, and air that we recognize the unique cultures, traditions, and values. Together as treaty people, we have a shared responsibility to act with respect for the environment that sustains all life, protecting the future for those generations to come. I would ask any members of council to declare a pecuniary interest now or any time during the meeting. Seeing none at the time, move on to item number four in camera. I'd look for a motion to go in camera for the reasons noted in the agenda. Councillor Ferguson and Councillor McRobert seconds, all in favor. Let's carry. Thank you. And we'll meet in Committee Room Three. Welcome back. Please join me for a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. I'd ask Mr. Beauchamp to rise and report motions of in camera, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I can report that County Council met in closed camera this morning for about 12 minutes to discuss a few matters, the first being to review and approve the Lambton County Council Closed Session Minutes dated September 3rd of 2025. The second was to receive a report regarding the CAO's annual performance review. And finally, to receive a report relating to negotiations between the county and a third party regarding potential litigation affecting the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, presentations. We have our Integrity Commissioner, Ms. Heinz, and I'll go over what I see as the procedure here. We'll first welcome Ms. Heinz. Hear her report. Council will provide our Integrity Commissioner some time to go over her report and recommendations. Following the presentation and the report, recommendation will be before council for debate and discussion. So saying that, I'd like to welcome Ms. Heinz to do her presentation virtually.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. For you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, members of council. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Rebecca Heinz. I am a lawyer with Hunter Legal LLP. Hunter Legal LLP is the delegate Integrity Commissioner for Lambton County in relation to Lambton County Code of Conduct Complaint 2025-01. I am here today to speak to the investigation report that is before you, dated September 23rd, 2025, in relation to the complaint that I just mentioned, which concerns Councillor Bill Dennis. I do apologize for the lights streaming in. I'll try to adjust the camera. If at any point you're having trouble seeing me or hearing me, please let me know and I'll make the necessary adjustments. So today I'll take some time to present on the report that is before you. It is quite a comprehensive report. It's about 50 pages. The report itself is about 37 pages, and the balance of the pages include interim reports as well as correspondence that you would have already received between the time that we were delegated authority to deal with this matter and today. If there's any aspect of the report that I don't specifically speak to in my oral presentation right now, I'm happy to answer any questions that the members may have. My purpose here is to assist council with its decision in relation to the report. I'll start with a brief overview. On February 6th, 2025, our office received a formal complaint that was dated February 2nd, 2025. We received this complaint in our capacity as delegate Integrity Commissioner to the county. The complaint was made under Section 9 of the county's Integrity Commissioner bylaw and in accordance with Part 5.1 of the Municipal Act 2001. The complaint alleged that Councillor Bill Dennis, a member of Lambton County Council and also Sarnia City Council, contravened several sections of the county's councillor code of conduct. Specifically, the complaint alleged that Councillor Dennis contravened Sections 5.1, 5.3, 5.4, 8.1, and 11.3 of the code, which are all reproduced in the report. These allegations were made by the complainant on account of remarks that the councillor had made during a regular meeting of council, which occurred on November 27th, 2024. So I'll refer to that meeting throughout as the meeting. In brief summary, this is our final investigation report, and for the reasons that I will discuss now and that are set out in the report, our findings and our opinions in this case are as follows. The councillor did not contravene Sections 5.1 or 5.3 of the code. The councillor did contravene Sections 5.4 and 11.3 of the code, and did contravene, but only in part, Section 8.1 of the code. I'm now going to provide some background into the facts leading up to the complaint. The report, like I said, does reproduce the relevant sections of the code, but I think it's better for me to say what they are later on in the analysis section so that they're top of mind as we go through that discussion. As I mentioned, the complaint was filed on February 2nd of this year by Chief Janelle Namabon. Chief Namabon is a resident and the chief of Amjanong First Nation. Amjanong is located within the geographical limits of the city of Sarnia and the county of Lambton. As I noted, Councillor Dennis is, of course, a member of Lambton County Council. Going back a little bit further, on November 5th of 2024, so about 11 months ago, Chief Namabon submitted a letter to the county on behalf of the First Nation regarding an environmentally hazardous incident that had impacted the First Nation community. The letter was about fines that had been collected by the Government of Ontario from Imperial Oil after the company caused a spill of slop oil to occur near Amjanong in April of 2021. The discharge of slop oil into the natural environment caused adverse effects for the members of the First Nation. In September 2024, Amjanong was informed that fines from the Imperial Oil incident were being given to Lambton County. In the letter, Chief Namabon requested that the county transfer these fine monies directly to Amjanong, as Amjanong members were the people impacted by the incident. The letter first went before the Committee of the Whole, that happened at its meeting on November 20th, 2024. The committee did not engage in a substantive debate on the item, but it was referred to council with a recommendation that council receive and file the letter. The letter was included on the agenda for the meeting, which occurred on November 27th, 2024. In accordance with the committee's earlier decision, the motion before council was to receive and file the letter. Neither the chief nor any First Nation representative attended the meeting. During consideration of the motion, Councillor Bradley initiated a discussion regarding the handling of the letter and questioned whether it would be more appropriate to further consider Amjanong's request rather than simply receive and file the correspondence. Shortly after that remark and in relation to the matter, Councillor Bill Dennis made the following remarks. "The chief, I wish her all the success in the world, but she has shown through her own actions that she is very, very anti-chemical valley. She has gone to Toronto and spoke at Queen's Park. She's used words like or terms like environmental terrorism. She's mentioned about the end game is to get rid of Chemical Valley. She went to Japan just recently for a plastics conference, and she talked about environmental terrorism. They have an end goal to get rid of Chemical Valley. They've already put Aineos out of business. We cannot keep on being weak to these people. We can't. We have to show some backbone." Subsequently, the chief filed the complaint in response to the councillor's comments. As noted, we received the complaint in our capacity as delegate Integrity Commissioner on February 6th. The delegation was made from the county's appointed Integrity Commissioner, who is Eardan Burles LLP, to our office the day prior. That occurred by way of formal letter to the county clerk. As noted in the report, there was a preliminary issue with which we had to consider and deal with, which was a limitation period issue. The county's Integrity Commissioner bylaw requires that any complaint be submitted within 30 days of the incident in question. The Integrity Commissioner bylaw also includes discretionary provision that permits the Integrity Commissioner to receive and consider a complaint beyond that limitation period so long as they are satisfied that the criteria set out in the bylaw are satisfied. In this instance, this was our first matter to consider. The complaint, which was provided by way of sworn affidavit evidence, included submissions on this point, and we considered those submissions. We provided notice to the complainant that we had received the complaint, and that occurred on February 7th. We let them know that we would consider their request, to consider the matter outside of the time period and to exercise our discretion under Section 8.2 of the Integrity Commissioner bylaw. We conducted our review and made our determination, and about a week later, we advised the complainant that we would permit their request and that the criteria in our view had been satisfied on the basis of their submissions. We also determined on the basis of our initial review that there were reasonable and probable grounds to believe that a contravention of the code may have occurred in this case. We informed the complainant of these findings and let them know that the councillor would be provided with a copy of the complaint and would be given an opportunity to respond. On February 14th, we provided notice to the councillor regarding the complaint, as well as our preliminary findings and determinations on the limitation period issue. We received confirmation of our notice. We also, at that time, gave the councillor a copy of the code and the Integrity Commissioner bylaw. We later received contact from the councillor's representative, and we discussed the complaint briefly with them at that time. Moving on to the next section, mediation. So the county's Integrity Commissioner bylaw requires that the Integrity Commissioner attempt to mediate a complaint between the parties before before moving on to a full inquiry. So this is a requirement under Section 9.1. Pursuant to that requirement, we did attempt to mediate the complaint and we had scheduled a mediation session for March 25 of 2025. The mediation session did commence on this date as scheduled, but it did not proceed past the preliminary portion of the session and a substantive discussion did not occur. In summary, the mediation attempt was not successful. We've included some recommendations in our report regarding this requirement. While we understand it is intended to ideally facilitate an early resolution of complaints, mediation is in essence intended to be a voluntary process and the way that the requirement is drafted presently, it does suggest that in order to move forward in the process, both parties must participate in mediation. So it's a little confusing in that sense. And so we found that unfortunately neither party was satisfied with the other's approach to participation in terms of the mediation and it did lead to some delay and frustration with the process. I'll also take this moment to note that at this time we provided our first of several, well, first of two interim reports to county council. We provided an interim report dated April 8, 2025, that basically just goes through what I just mentioned. Pursuant to the county's code, we would have been required to provide a final report within sixty days of receipt of the original complaint, which would have been early April. The mediation did not occur due to scheduling reasons until the end of March, so it would not have been possible for us to do that. And so we provided that interim report. So moving on to the investigation, the report does set out extensively the steps that we took. I will cover this very briefly. We conducted our investigation in accordance with the relevant provisions of the Municipal Act 2001 and the county's Integrity Commissioner Bylaw. We performed our duties and functions in a manner that was independent and impartial as required by the Municipal Act 2001. We also ensured that our process was procedurally fair, which included, among other things, granting requests for extensions from the counselor for responses and considering and addressing any preliminary or subsequent issues that the counselor raised. In the conduct of our investigation, we reviewed various materials. This included the complaint, the video recording of the meeting, agenda and meeting minutes, the written response from the counselor, which was dated April 29, the complainant's reply to the response dated May 22, the complainant's final submissions on our draft report dated August 21, as well as the counselor's final submissions on our final draft report dated August 18. So moving on to the next section of the report, there was a preliminary issue raised by the counselor regarding our communications with him leading up to us providing the notice of the complaint to gain on March 27 after the mediation. So once the mediation had concluded pursuant to the bylaw, that is when the quote-unquote "full and formal inquiry" commenced. So that commenced technically on March 27, 2025, which is when we again provided the complaint, a copy of the code, and the bylaw. I won't get into the details of that, but it is set out how we address that from pages thirteen to fifteen of the report. In terms of a brief submission of the parties' submissions, we received very extensive submissions in this case. The actual remarks themselves were not in dispute. Of course, they are on videotape. So there was never a dispute about what was said. It was more about the impact of the statements and whether or not those constituted a contravention of the code as alleged and also whether or not the Integrity Commissioner had jurisdiction to deal with the remarks, given that they were made in a meeting of council and they pertained to, that they would constitute political speech under, which is a protected form of freedom of speech under the Charter. So this is a very brief summary of the positions of the parties. We've gone through every single allegation in the report. So the complainant submitted that the counselor's statements were untrue, insulting, and disrespectful, as well as disparaging towards the complainant and the members of the First Nation and that the counselor mischaracterized the complainant's position and the broader intentions of the First Nation in respect of their environmental, economic, and government relations. The complainant alleged that the counselor's conduct and statements represented a serious violations of the standards expected of a member of council and further aggravated, were further aggravated by their impact on an indigenous community with a longstanding record of constructive engagement and documented experience of environmental harm. In response, the counselor's position was that the statements at the meeting were not insulting or disparaging, but rather related solely to policy and matters important to his constituents. The counselor maintained throughout that he did not contravene the code as alleged in the complaint. The counselor stated that his remarks were part of legitimate political debate addressing the impacts of policies and environmental activism on local businesses and communities and that they thus fell entirely within the realm of protected political speech. The counselor argued that policy disagreements over environmental issues and economic interests are unavoidable and appropriate subjects for political debate. He also noted that his remarks were not quote-unquote "actionable" under the code and nor did they disrespect the history or status of First Nations in the county. The counselor took the position, as well as I mentioned, that the Integrity Commissioner did not have jurisdiction in respect of political debate and that further the Charter guaranteed the right to free political expression so long as it does not cross into hate speech or similar exceptions. So I will take a moment now just to discuss freedom of expression and how we approached that issue and theme in this case. It was an aspect of this case that both parties provided significant, not only submissions but legal arguments on. So it is pertinent to this discussion and I will provide some information now. For those who are following along in the report, I'm at the bottom of page twenty-two. So of course, freedom of expression, including political speech, is a fundamental right in Canada. Municipalities are government entities, which means that they are subject to the Charter. This, of course, extends to municipalities' local rules and regulations, which are enacted through bylaws and through resolutions. The Code of Conduct itself is a government document enacted by a bylaw and it is necessary to recognize the fundamental right to freedom of expression, which includes the ability to engage in political speech and share opinions on matters of public interest. The members of council, county council, are elected to represent their constituents and participate in robust debates on issues affecting the community. However, this right is not absolute. It must be balanced against the limitations imposed by the code, which seeks to ensure respectful and civil discourse. Of course, the code was enacted by council and council has broad discretion over what is included in the code. The code reflects council's determination that certain standards of behavior are necessary to maintain public trust and integrity in municipal governance. Accordingly, while members retain the right to express their views, they are required to do so within the boundaries established by the code. And I'll just take a moment to reiterate that codes of conduct are required by provincial legislation. They were made mandatory as of 2019. Before that, they were permitted, but since I've been practicing law, they've been mandatory. And like I said, the county has broad discretion, as all municipalities in Ontario do, over what's included in the code. Although there is a regulation that sets out what must be included, but the counties, all other municipalities can add in additional additional provisions as they see fit. And I'll quickly mention that respectful conduct is one of only four prescribed matters under the Municipal Act that must be included in all municipal codes of conduct. So my job in this case was to assess and interpret the matter, to consider the matter and to imply and interpret the code in a manner that was aligned with the Charter. So our analysis and opinions are set out starting at Section 24. I'm just gonna check how I'm doing for time. So I'm not going to take, I'm not going to go through every detail of our opinions. I'll cover off each section of the code relatively briefly and if council would like to come back to anything, I'm happy to do that. So we independently and impartially considered and assessed all of the evidence that was before us. And in making any findings, we applied the civil standard of proof, namely the balance of probabilities, which means whether it is more likely than not that something occurred. So Section 5.1 of the code requires all members to abide by all applicable legislation, policies, and procedures pertaining to their position as a member. In this case, the complaint had alleged that Counselor Dennis breached this section by allegedly failing to comply with the county's land acknowledgement policy. We reviewed the policy and found that it does not contain any standalone requirements for individual members pertaining to their position as a member. Rather, it establishes the county's general policy position as a collective. For that reason, we were not able to find any standalone requirements in that policy that pertained to Counselor Dennis. So that's how we interpreted that section of the code. This type of section usually applies to, for example, the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, that obviously has very clear requirements for individual members and what they must do. Another very common example is the council staff relations policy, which all municipalities are required to enact under the Municipal Act. That is also a policy that would contain individual requirements, but we found the land acknowledgement policy did not and on that basis, we found that the counselor did not contravene that section. Section 5.3 of the code provides as follows. "Members will conduct their dealings with each other in ways that maintain public confidence in the position to which they have been elected or appointed. Members will be open and honest, focused on issues rather than personalities, and avoid aggressive, offensive, or abusive conduct." The complainant wanted us to interpret this to find that the second part regarding being open and honest and focusing on personalities rather than issues applied in this case. We looked at the code more broadly in terms of how the other provisions are drafted and based on that contextual review as well as our plain reading of the provision, we found that this provision pertains specifically to conduct between members. And that's really set out in the first sentence, which says members will conduct their dealings with each other, which is distinguishable from other sections of the code, which refer specifically to members of the public. So we, again, in light of the applicable legal principles, when we're trying to interpret this in line with the Charter, we are not going to interpret it more broadly than the plain language used in the code. If council had a different intention for this provision, then council may wish to consider amending it, but if not, then that interpretation, we think that that's how it would read. So we found that the counselor did not breach Section 5.3 on that basis. Section 5.4 provides that "members shall refrain from making disparaging remarks about other members, members of the public, or about council's decisions." So this establishes a very general and broad standard of respectful communication for members of council and it prohibits them from making disparaging remarks towards members, other members, members of the public and council's decisions. The intent, we believe, is to foster a culture of civility and mutual respect in municipal governance, ensuring that all individuals, whether colleagues, constituents, or members of the wider community are treated with respect in public discourse. So upon reviewing this section of the code, we found that in terms of its application and scope, this would not apply to the chief in her position as an official. It doesn't refer to public officials and so we would not interpret it so broadly, but it does refer to members of the public and we do find that members of the public would include members of the First Nation. So on that basis, we conducted our analysis just in relation to the remarks that had been made regarding the members of the First Nation. We also indicate that if council wishes to address this, this, I call it a gap, but it might not be. It might be on purpose. If council wishes to address this gap and extend the protections of the code to include other persons acting in their official capacities beyond members of council, such as chiefs of First Nations or other community leaders, it is open to council to amend the code accordingly. But in the meantime, while concerns about remarks made regarding the chief, while potentially troubling to some, these remarks do not constitute a breach of Section 5.4 of the code. And we do indicate that the appropriate recourse would be with such comments is through the democratic process rather than a finding of misconduct under the code. So in the report, we do go through the statements regarding the chief, but for the reasons I just outlined, I'm not going to take our time to talk about them now. And I'm going to skip forward to the remarks made about the First Nation. I'll also address, so the comments when the counselor was saying, using, you know, he was saying "they" or "these people", the counselor maintained that his use of these terms referred to environmental activists generally and not to members of the First Nation. "We did not accept this interpretation when considering the context of the meeting and the sequence of events and also the likely perspective of a reasonable, objective observer." Like I had mentioned earlier, the context of the meeting was the request from the First Nation in the letter regarding the fine monies that had been collected. And additionally, the remarks before Counselor Bradley specifically referred to the First Nation. And at no point during council's discussion was there any mention of environmental activists generally. The focus was at all relevant times the First Nation. Also, the counselor did not clarify or specify that he was referring to environmental activists rather than members of the First Nation despite having the opportunity to do so. So that's the basis upon which we've found that the use of the terms "they" and "these people" was referring to members of the First Nation rather than environmental activists generally. In our opinion, the remarks were disparaging. They attributed to the members of the First Nation an end goal to get rid of Chemical Valley. The statement assigns a negative and adversarial motive to the group and suggests that their actions are not motivated by legitimate concerns such as the protection of their health, the environment, or community, but rather a desire to undermine or eliminate a significant part of the local economy. We provide additional reasons and I'm happy to come back to this, but in summary, that's why we made that finding. We also indicate that members of council are entrusted with the important responsibility of expressing their views and representing the interests of the community. However, it is incumbent upon them to exercise appropriate care and restraint when discussing sensitive matters and issues involving members of a marginalized community. As elected officials, they are held to a higher standard than members of the public and in this instance, we found the counselor fell short of meeting this standard. We made similar findings regarding the other statements made and I'm happy to come back to that if council would like that additional context as part of this verbal presentation. Section 8.1 provides that "members have a duty to treat members of the public, each other, and staff with respect and dignity and without abuse, bullying, or intimidation." So this creates a positive obligation on members to treat, in this case, members of the public with respect and dignity and also to refrain from acting with abuse, bullying, or intimidation. So it's in our, we interpret it to have two parts of the requirement and we applied the code on that basis. the code on that basis. So in assessing this, we did look at the respect and dignity piece first, and in this case, we found that the standard requires members not only to choose their words carefully, but also to be mindful of broader context and the impact of their conduct. So in this case, several contextual factors were critical. Again, the matter before council arose from the Amjanong First Nation following an environmental incident that impacted their community adversely. The First Nation wrote to the county requesting that the fine monies be transferred to them and as they were impacted by this bill. So that was the context. This was not a general policy debate. There was no particular policy being debated or discussed pertaining to economics, environmental matters, or otherwise. It was a specific appeal to the county to recognize and address an experience that the First Nation had had. The necessity of the First Nation to even petition the county for these funds, we found, underscored the power imbalance at play here. And in addition, of course, this is a marginalized community, and they were not present to respond to any remarks that were made. It's also notable, the councillor has not acknowledged the impact of the remarks as detailed in the complaint, as is his right, of course, but I just mentioned that when assessing whether the situation. So we did accept Chief Namabin's sworn affidavit evidence, which indicated that the comments were perceived as harmful by the members of the First Nation. So for this reason, it was our opinion that section 8.1 in part was contravened. It is our opinion that the second half of 8.1 was not contravened. The conduct in question does not, in our view, rise to the level of abuse, bullying, or intimidation. The terms did not, they were not threatening, they were not intended to cause any physical harm or fear, while disrespectful, we did not find that they rose to that level. No threats, no coercion, no conduct intended to exert undue pressure or influence. And we did find, as detailed throughout the report, that the councillor was motivated by a very genuine concern for his constituents and the well-being of his community. So the degree of malice that would be required to make a finding of those characteristics was not present in this case. Section 11.3 is almost identical in language to section 5.4 regarding disparaging remarks. The only distinction, or the only major distinction, is that section 11.3 falls under a section called Communications and Media Relations, whereas section 5.4 falls under the general duties. So the plain language itself is so similar that we found a contravention of section 11.3 on the basis of our reasoning regarding section 5.4, and found that this section was also contravened. If council wishes to distinguish this section from 5.3, council can make that more clear in the language of the section itself. Of course, any recommendations I've made in this report, if council wishes to make any changes to the code, council is encouraged to do so in consultation with the appointed integrity commissioner and/or legal counsel. So in conclusion, for the reasons in the report that I've attempted to briefly explain this morning, we found that the councillor did not contravene section 5.1 or 5.3 of the code. The councillor did contravene sections 5.4 and 11.3 of the code, and did contravene but only in part section 8.1. We gave the parties an opportunity to make submissions on the draft final report that occurred in August. We did receive extensive submissions, which we needed to take time to consider and address. This included the councillor raising an allegation of bias against our office. I've addressed that in the report, and I'm happy to speak to it further if council wishes. That is addressed from pages 33 to 35. I'm going to move on now to the recommendations. This is when we talk about what council's role is here today. So in Code of Conduct Matters, the integrity commissioner investigates and determines whether a contravention has occurred, in their opinion, and makes recommendations on that basis. Council then decides whether to accept, reject, or vary any recommended penalties or corrective measures. What this means is council has discretion. So while the integrity commissioner makes recommendations, it's open to council to consider the matter and decide however council sees fit. So if that means accepting the recommendations as they are in the report, that is, of course, an option. If council can do nothing, so council is the adjudicator in this case, and I'm happy to assist council in its determinations. So the available penalties under the municipal act, there are only two statutory penalties that are permitted. They are a reprimand and a suspension of the members' pay for a period of 90 days. The divisional court in Ontario has also consistently recognized that a municipality may also impose additional remedial or corrective measures, provided they are truly remedial in nature and do not constitute an unauthorized sanction, which means basically another measure that is intended to be punitive in nature under the guise of remedial. In this case, as detailed above, it's my opinion that the councillor contravened sections 4.5, 8.1 in part, I apologize, 5.4, 8.1 in part, and 11.3 of the code. And on this basis, and considering the need for specific deterrence in this case, I recommend one penalty, which is a formal reprimand. I am not recommending, we, our firm is not recommending, a suspension of pay in this case, and we've made this recommendation on the basis of the conduct in question, also balanced, you know, of course, with what we've been, what I've been discussing already, which is the importance of council members feeling empowered to speak on matters of community interest. The county's integrity commissioner bylaw requires the integrity commissioner to provide a draft form of reprimand, which I've done, so that is set out at attachment five to the report. That is just a very generic form of reprimand, which council may choose to adopt or not. In terms of corrective measures, we've suggested two remedial natures to constructively address the conduct in this particular case. Again, remedial measures are permitted so long as they are intended to actually address the harm in question. In this instance, we've recommended the review of two documents that pertain to indigenous matters. So we've requested that council decide to impose the following corrective measures. One, request that the councillor review the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada's summary of the final report of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada, titling Honoring the Truth: Reconciling for the Future. We've provided the link to that, and request that the councillor review pages 121 to 140 of the Environmental Commissioner of Ontario's 2017 Environmental Protection Report, which specifically details the history of Amjanong and environmental pollution there. We have framed these remedial measures as requests rather than requirements, as the councillor cannot be compelled to take these steps. In making these recommendations, we've balanced the need for respectful and thoughtful discourse with the importance of allowing elected officials to express their views without creating a chilling effect on participation. Although the discussion in this case concerned a specific and sensitive request from the First Nation, a marginalized community for funds related to harm they experienced, and was not, as the councillor maintained, about a general municipal policy, we accept that the councillor was motivated by a desire to represent his constituents and advocate for those whose livelihoods depend on the petrochemical industry in Lymden County. We found no evidence of malice in his intent, but nevertheless, we accept the complainant's assessment of the adverse impact that the councillor's remarks had on the Amjanong community, and find that the councillor should have exercised greater care in this case. We encourage the councillor to exercise greater care in the future, especially when addressing matters involving marginalized communities. This is the standard expected of members under the code, and it was not met in this case. Section 10.8 of the bylaw provides that where the integrity commissioner has filed a report in respect of a mediation and/or inquiry with the county clerk, the county clerk shall place the report on the next available council agenda for council's consideration and action, which is what we're here to do today. That concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. There's your report. I'll open it up to council for debate. Councillor Loosely, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott, and through you to Ms. Heinz. Thank you for the detailed report. However, I'm a little disappointed on your recommendations. My feeling is, no matter what, you have made it clear, he did contravene 4.5, part of 8.1, 11.3, a reprimand, but when you recommended only two remedial measures, and then make it clear that they're only requests, not requirements. And I just want to pass on, we have to operate with a code with mutual respect here with all of us, and I'm just a little disappointed on your recommendations. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that, Ms. Heinz.
Through you, Mr. Warden, I will simply thank the councillor for his comments. Council is permitted to receive and discuss the report however they see fit, and I respect the councillor's position. And I'll reiterate that council has the authority to deviate from my recommendations, so long as, like I said, the only authorized penalties are those under the municipal act, any other remedial natures. For example, you know, a request for an apology, something like that, that's permitted, so long as it is remedial in nature. And that's what I'll say about that. I'd also like to just take this opportunity, I apologize, there is a typo on the final page of the report. It says that the councillor contravened section 4.5, that should say 5.4. I apologize for that typo.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Motions? Councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Warden. I'd like to put forward a motion for the reprimand and for remedial action parts one and two. And if there's a second or that'll open up the floor, do you have more to debate?
Do we have a second or for the motion? Councillor Veen, seconds. Go ahead, Councillor Ferguson, did you want to add to that?
I think this has been out for quite a while. We have a third party who is, that is their job to do this, this is what they have found. And at this point, I'd like to follow along with this. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Councillor Bradley. You're on mute, Councillor Bradley.
Thank you, and I do support councillor Loosely's comments. Here's a headline from the Sarnia Observer just two years ago. "Sarnia-Amjanong Relationship Is Strong, Leaders Say." And over the years, with different chiefs, going back to Ray Rogers up to the present chief, we have worked very hard to have a respectful relationship. And it is unique. You've got the territory right beside the city, and there's very few places where, you know, police services are provided and paid for, fire, water, sewer, the power comes from the water power. So that relationship, I thought, was ignored during this report, how integrated we are as a community, communities. And every day, it takes a lot of effort to keep that relationship strong. So I hope county council today, I think the penalties, the idea of reading these reports, I think is a waste of time suggesting that, but I still think they need to pass this motion. And I also hope at the end, when we take off the table the letter from the chief, that we will arrange a meeting between county council and the chief and band council, just to talk, as we have in the past. I recall Chief Brissette coming from Kelland-Stoney Point to talk to county council a number of years ago, so that we continue to show that we want this relationship to work, and we want this relationship to be productive for both our communities. So thank you.
Councillor White, please.
Thank you, Warden, and thank you for the report, Ms. Heinz. Just to further councillor Bradley's point, and it was a point I was going to raise, through the work of the Andrik Committee of the City of Sarnia, we've had a number of engagement opportunities with our friends in our First Nation communities. They're our neighbors, they're our friends, they're our partners economically as well as socially, and it's been, you know, years of building relationships. You know, Mayor Bradley has a long history of participating in that and contributing to that. I've been blessed with the opportunity to participate over the last number of years as well, and I can honestly say that in the discussions and the meetings that our committee has had with councils, both from Bekaishwanong and Amjanong, we've been, you know, graciously welcomed into their chambers for conversations, and there is an added tension now. There is a level of concern with how this relationship is going to unfold. I believe that they've been very gracious in working with those of us who are willing to participate in these conversations, but at the same time, it needs to be noted that incidents like this can set us back significantly. And when I think to the long-term opportunities here, they do include economic opportunities. We have a movement now at the federal level to engage First Nation communities, indigenous communities, Inuit communities, Cree communities, Métis communities, all across the country, to invite their youth into economic opportunities, fostering skill development by filling our labor shortages with, you know, young, talented folks in communities that are actually growing while many of our other communities continue to shrink. The opportunities are there for us to foster these relationships, to help backfill some of our greatest skill shortages, which does include the shortages that we're facing in the Chemical Valley. And then I'll just, you know, add that if you look to some of our biggest partners in the Chemical Valley, in the industrial cluster, many of them have spent a lot of years now fostering good relations with Amjanong and the other communities. And so they see the value in maintaining and building good relations, not only for the social good, but also for their economic prosperity as well. So we need to acknowledge that, and then for my own part, you know, I'm embarrassed for what happened, and I do feel it's important to acknowledge that, you know, at least at some point, perhaps, you know, I fell short and could have intervened, but it is important that we acknowledge that as a community and as a group here, that we have great opportunities here, and moments like those can set us back significantly. So thank you.
Okay. Before I call the question, one last call for comments, questions. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion on the floor?
Recorded vote, please. Mr. Warden, recorded vote.
We have a motion from councillor Ferguson, seconded by councillor Veen, to accept the reprimand and remedial suggestions presented by the delegated integrity commissioner in its report dated September 23rd. A recorded vote has been requested by councillor Bradley, and we will start the voting with councillor Atkinson. I have a yes. Councillor Bushy?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Bradley?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Broad?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Case?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Cook?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Ferguson?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Hand?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Loosely?
No.
I have a no. Councillor McRoberts?
No.
I have a no. Councillor Miller?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Sagman?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Veen?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor White?
Yes.
I have a yes. Deputy Warden Hagar?
Yes.
I have a yes.
I have a yes.
Warden Marriott?
I have a yes.
That motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Beauchamp. That brings us to item nine on the agenda, minutes of open council of Sept... Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Hines, thank you again for your time today and your report. And thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Goodbye.
Goodbye. So now that brings us to item number nine, minutes of open session of September the 3rd. I'd look for a motion to adopt Counsel Miller and Counsel Hand seconds. All in favor? Let's carry. Item number 10, Board of Health, Dr. Duick, please. We have two correspondence to receive and file. I'd look for a motion to receive and file both items. Counsel Bean, seconded by Counsel Cook, all in favor. That's carried. And Board of Health, information reports, there's three of them here. Unless there's a desired otherwise, I'd look for a motion to receive and file all three. Counsel Case and Counsel Bushi, seconds. All in favor. No question, but Counsel White.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Dr. Duick, thank you for your reports. On Report C, regard to sexual health, you highlighted there's still an elevated incidence here of several STIs of concern. Can you just speak to perhaps why we are maybe facing a higher level of concern with these particular issues in Lampton County?
Dr. Duick, please.
Thank you. Through you, Warden. You'll see in the report regarding the sexual health program update that surveillance trends from 2014 to 2023 are highlighted for chlamydia, hepatitis C, and syphilis. So for chlamydia, this is the most common sexually transmitted infection, or STI. And the Lampton rates are consistently below the provincial average for this. For hepatitis C, in Lampton County, this has been higher historically than the provincial average. However, promisingly has been decreasing since 2018. And in 2023, it was near the provincial rate. The last is syphilis, and rates have been rising locally and provincially. Lampton's rate is still slightly higher than Ontario right now in 2023. And so there's been a lot of training in our sexual health clinic about how to diagnose and treat syphilis with our MD and NP who work with us. And strategies for reducing the rate of syphilis are proper treatment. And so we have also shared information with our healthcare providers about how to properly diagnose and treat.
Thank you, Dr. Duick. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll look to any other business for the Board of Health this morning. Counsel Hand, please.
Appreciate if you could just talk to us a little bit about immunization. And as we come into the fall, is there, what are the suggestions around COVID shots and flu shots and the like, and will there be a flu clinic offered? Thank you.
Dr. Duick, please.
Thank you. Through you, Warden, to Counselor Hand. We provided our information about the 2025 to 2026 respiratory season planning and preparedness in our first report in your package. And so beginning last year, the Ontario Ministry of Health shifted the focus for local public health units to reach out to harder access populations. And so we did a large promotion last year and continue to align with the province on this, where we look to the community to refer to their healthcare provider or a pharmacy to get a COVID or a flu shot. However, we do still a lot of work with mobile clinics, including First Nations communities, congregate residents, and homebound individuals who have a harder time accessing through those points. We also run pediatric COVID and flu clinics up to age 18 at the Point Edward facility. The province also rolled out expanded programs for RSV vaccination and immunization. It's quite exciting, actually. You see the rates of RSV coming down over the last season. And so these are targeted to older adults who are high risk. It started with retirement homes and long-term care homes. It's been expanded to all adults, 75 and plus. You only need one dose. You don't need to have one every year. And 60 to 74 years of age with comorbidities, living in a congregate living setting, homelessness, or indigenous identity. Further, there is an immunization, which is a monoclonal antibody called Befortis, which is given to newborns now. And also really exciting to see that being rolled out by the province.
Counsel White, please.
Yeah, thank you. Just as a follow-up to my previous question, just to, because I'm not, I sort of sat and thought about it for a moment and wasn't sure I quite got what I was looking for there. Are we able to, are you able to drill down as to the rationale? As to, or the reasons, underlying reasons as to why we are seeing trends up, whether it's provincially or locally, for some of these cases? It just seems, again, I'm thinking maybe broad strokes here. It's 2025. We've had lots of education for decades now. We've had access to, you know, safe options. And just curious as to why we might be somewhat stepping backwards on this.
Dr. Duick, please.
Thank you. Through you, Warden, to Counselor White. When we're looking at the syphilis rates, it is perplexing to see them going up, given that there is effective treatment and lots of education, as you mentioned. We do note from surveillance from the province that people who are infected with syphilis tend to have comorbidities, including IV drug use or issues accessing care. And so this might be correlated, but I couldn't say for certain.
Anything else for Dr. Duick this morning? Seeing nothing else, thank you, Dr. Duick, for your time this morning. That brings us to item number 11, information reports. I believe probably this report should be dealt with at the lower-tier level. And if that's the feeling, I'd look for a motion to receive and file. Deputy Warden Agar moves. Do have a second or? Counsel Miller? Oh, Counsel Broad, seconding. All in favor? Pose, that's carried. Item number 12. We have minutes from tourism Sarnia-Lampton dated July the 10th. Look for a motion to receive and file these. Counsel Hand, seconded by Counsel Atkinson. All in favor? Pose, that's carried. Item number 13, committee minutes. I'd just ask if there's any of those committee minutes anybody wants to, or Counsel Lucely.
Thank you, Ward Marriott. In regards to item number 17 under correspondence, I think you know my concern about allowing individuals to address us regarding council, providing they meet the criteria time limits. I also believe some of these requests are worthy of county council's concern, and I would like to request a recorded vote, please. And that's item number 17.
Okay. Recorded vote requested. And we'll look at the randomator. Counsel Bean? Counsel Lucely, I'll ask it for clarification, please.
Yeah, I think the motion before you, they've already supported. I'm against it, so I will be opposing it. So the motion that you've got is approving the moratorium, and I'm saying I disagree with that. I vote against that.
Mr. Tifo, could you explain, please? Clarify.
Thank you, Warden. In short, at the committee of the whole, you had a report from finance recommending a moratorium on any new grant applications. At the committee of the whole, you approved that report, therefore imposing a moratorium. Counsel Lucely is looking for a recorded vote on that issue. So if you vote for yes, i.e. you're voting yes, that is to continue the moratorium. And if you were to vote no, then you're effectively rejecting that report, and then the issue's back on the table.
Thank you for that clarification. I'll ask for the votes, please.
We'll start the voting with Counselor Cook. I have a yes. Counselor Ferguson? I have a yes. Counselor Hand?
I have a no.
Counselor Lucely?
I have a no.
Counsel McRoberts?
I have a no.
Counsel Miller?
I have a yes.
Counselor Sagman?
I have a yes.
Counselor Bean?
I have a yes.
Counselor White?
I have a yes.
Deputy Warden Agar?
I have a yes.
Counselor Atkinson?
I have a yes.
Counsel Bushi?
I have a yes.
Counsel Bradley?
No.
I have a no. Counsel Broad?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counsel Case?
I have a yes.
Warden Marriott?
I have a yes.
That motion passes.
Okay, now I'd look for a motion to approve the committee of the whole minutes of September 17th. Counsel Ferguson and Counsel Case seconds. All in favor. That's carried. Item number 14, items tabled from previous meetings. My suggestion is we've addressed this with the previous IC report. And I'd look for a motion to receive and file. Counsel Bradley?
The IC report did deal with Mr. Warden and counsel with a number of issues that were raised. But there was still a request for a meeting with county council by the chief. And I think it's just prudent to do that. And I would leave it to your discretion and the CAO to set something up in the new year and the format to be at your choosing. But I do think we should honor that request as part of moving forward on what just occurred at this meeting.
So myself and Mr. Tifo did meet with the chief virtually to discuss. But if you prefer a different request of all of council, then that would be separate.
Or we can put it simply back to the chief and band council saying, do you wish to have a meeting now that we've dealt with this issue? And I'll leave that within your hands.
Okay. So is there anybody that wants to receive and file? Counsel Lucely?
Warden Marriott, just as a clarification, do we need to lift this from the table?
Yeah.
First? I would move that we lift this from the table.
Thank you, Counsel Lucely. Seconded by Counsel McRoberts. All in favor uplifting. Pose if any, that's carried. So then that would be a second motion. Counsel Lucely?
Thank you, Ward Marriott. I'd move that we receive and file this item.
Second or on that motion? Counsel Cook? All in favor? Pose if any, that's carried. Item number 15, there are no notice of motions unless there's some now. And that brings me to item 16, other businesses. Is there any other business before this establishment today? Going one toll. Counsel McRoberts, please.
Thank you, through the chair. I would just like to ask, Ms. Fitzpatrick, what's the plan for the X-Mouth site right now? We're coming into that weather where it's cold in the morning. We do have our neighbors that are upset about things. So how are we going to handle that? And have we been at full capacity majority of the time? Thank you.
Ms. Fitzpatrick, please.
Through you, Warden, to Counselor McRoberts. Our intention is to maintain the overflow shelter at the Laura Lee Church through the winter. Capacity, we are sitting 80, 90% capacity. I will just offer that we always offer a shelter bed at the end of the Good Shepherd on Confederation Street first, and we use the Laura Lee site second. I do want to add that part of the issue with the volume in and out of that building for the neighborhood is the co-location of our Housing Homeless Resource Center. So that runs during the day and then the shelter at night. And the Housing Homeless Resource Center will close with the opening of the Harp Hub, which is expected late this fall. So that portion of the service will move to 210 Lockheale Street. So we're hopeful that with the closure of the Housing Homeless Resource Center, the traffic will be far less in that neighborhood. But to answer your question, our intention is to maintain the overflow shelter for the time being.
Follow up, Counsel McRoberts.
Just to confirm, it'll probably run all the way through March. Just so we can have that out in the media, so that folks know exactly what date.
Ms. Fitzpatrick, please.
Through you, Warden, to Counselor McRoberts. We haven't identified an exact closure date yet, but it is reasonable to expect that through the winter months it will continue. And we would hope come springtime, we'll be in a position to look at perhaps winding it down.
Thank you. Counselor White, please.
Thank you. Follow up to that, then. If it maintains its status as an overflow shelter without the resource center, what do the hours look like? And how do we manage the population movement during the day to ensure that there's safety? And I think more of a, you know, reasonable set of expectations on the neighborhood and what they're able to withstand.
Ms. Fitzpatrick, please.
Through you, Warden. So the hours for the shelter will be 6:00 PM to 11:00 AM the next morning. As an interim measure, once the day program is relocated, we will maintain security services through the day just to funnel people to the new Harp Hub on Lockheale Street. We'll provide transportation for them to get down to the Harp Hub. So certainly we expect traffic, or client traffic through the day to be very much minimized. We look at the usage of the day program. We're seeing about 190 users per month. Versus the shelter, it's a maximum of 35 beds. So you can imagine it'll be far less usage of the building when it goes, when we switch to only a shelter being ran out of that facility.
Counsel Hand?
I think I'm confused when you talk about the Harp Hub, because I thought the Harp Hub was tied to program. So it came on a program, and you could be there for 18 months. Is there something else that's within that program?
Ms. Fitzpatrick, please.
Through you, Warden. So the Harp Hub is multi-component. One of the components of the Harp Hub will be a day program, a hub, that the County of Lampton Homelessness Prevention Team will take the lead with staffing. An additional component are the recovery beds that will be operated of skits. So there's many components to the Harp suite of services. But the day program is one of them, which will result in the closure of our current Housing Homeless Resource Center.
Counsel Bradley, you had your hand up previously.
Yeah, Mr. Warden, you and I had this discussion a few weeks ago. I would like to see a date out there on when this will close. I'm willing to be flexible, but we need to wind this. It was supposed to be a one-year shelter, temporary shelter, overflow. It's turned into something much more. And I'd like to see, and if I have to, I'll bring a motion to the next meeting, to see an end date. So, and if it doesn't get met, or changes, or gets advanced, that's fine. But we need to give that neighborhood some understanding that this is going to come to an end at some point next year.
Would you like to comment on that, Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Sure, through you, Warden. I mean, in terms of a closure date, I, so our intention, all along with maintaining this overflow site, was to ensure we had enough shelter capacity to offer folks that needed a shelter space, a place to go, so our lower-tier partners had a mechanism to enforce their encampment protocols. Our shelter usage remains quite high at this point. However, we have several housing projects nearing completion. However, we have several housing projects nearing completion that are imminent in the next few months, which we are very hopeful it will reduce our reliance on that overflow shelter. And just to restate, I'm sure council's aware, a second shelter is not a priority of the division. We have no intentions of maintaining it indefinitely. We want to invest our resources into housing solutions and not another permanent shelter. So as soon as reasonably possible is our intention to wind that down and focus more on permanent housing solutions versus another shelter. An exact date, I feel it's difficult to predict at this right now, but we're getting closer to being able to offer that information to the community.
Would you be, Counselor Bradley? Would you be willing to look at this in another month? Or how did you like to proceed?
Mr. Warden, what I would suggest is that the staff come back and say, these are when we expect to have these other places open, you know, in general terms. And then we can look at what is a reasonable time period to then bring this shelter to a close. And I just ask you to come back and confirm when you think these other places would be open at a future meeting, and then we can look at the timing on a closure.
Okay. So maybe Ms. Fitzpatrick could consider that for next meeting? Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other business at this time, I'd look to item number 17, notice of bylaws. Mr. Beauchamp, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. It is moved by Counselor White and seconded by Counselor Veen that bylaw number 21 of 2025, as circulated, be taken as being read a first and a second time.
All in favor? Let's carry.
It is moved by Counselor Veen and seconded by Counselor White that bylaw number 2021 of 2025, as circulated, be taken as being read a third and final time.
All in favor? Let's carry. Thank you. Brings us to number 18, adjournment. I'd move a motion to adjourn. The next meeting for regular council is November the 5th, with in-camera session that commence at 9:00 AM. Counselor Veen moves, seconder please. Counselor Lucely? All in favor? Let's carry. Thank you. Please join me in O'Canada.